Evening, I call this board meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Please be advised, in the event of a fire emergency and alarm will sound, please note all emergency exits and evacuate well away from the building. At this time of request, everyone, please turn your cell phones to silent. Item three, additions, deletions, and changes to the agenda.
There are none.
And the consent agenda. Can I have a motion for one through seven, please?
I'll make it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Communications, correspondence, Mr. Malasani.
Yes, so in your board packet, you have high school honor roll percentages compared to last year as well. You see right around seventy percent. So seven out of ten students are either in the honor roll or high honor roll in grades nine through twelve. Also, for some of the points of pride, just want to point out to you, get information over the weekend from Mrs. Amy's class, Mrs. Amy Harmon's class, that fifth grade Caitlin Wiley won the Genesee Valley Peace Board Jeep Contest. It was over five hundred entries, and she won one of the top places.
And the Caldony Mumford High School was well represented at the Section Five, two thousand twenty-three Leadership Summit. Our participating students were Shay Dreszkowski, Kalen Jake, Colin Foot, Jeremiah Anderson, and Austin Chanel.
Our high school environmental science students in Mrs. Howell's class harvested two hundred brown trout eggs from their own classroom tank at the Bath Fish Hatchery. And the class maintained their tank and raised the eggs to the fry age and later released them in the Wecker Creek in Scottsville. Our high school brainstormers won both matches against Avon and York in their spring competition on March thirtieth.
Liz, you want to go?
Sure. The in-fifth grade back Caitlin Wiley, she also designed a T-shirt, Rise Above It All, which was sold as a fundraiser to assist with the fifth grade activities.
And for the middle school, Mr. Ricardo led a successful car cleaning fundraiser for the class of two thousand twenty-eight for their trip to Washington, DC.
I think, are they having the, is Mr. Ricardo doing the fund night too for that fundraiser?
Likely.
Yeah.
Serious events.
I like it. Fifth grade students participated in the Genesee Valley BOSI Storytellers Festival at Pavilion. All of them did a great job telling their stories. Librarian Mrs. Burns accompanied the young writers, Harper Gollum Pernicone, Audrey Padlakiel, Kayla Burns, Isabella Kreski, Joseline Patnella, and Cosette Kincaid. Calmont Elementary School welcomed Ag in the Classroom volunteers from Cornell Cooperative Extension to learn about growing their own food by creating a garden or a larger plot of land called a farm. The students sowed basil and tomato seeds, which they took home. One of our favorite Ag in the Classroom volunteers was Ciam alum Kelly Jo Stein.
Thank you, everybody. We have no guests of the board. We have nobody signed up for public forum. So superintendent's report is the report from our compact committees.
Yes, Mr. Boater.
We just recently did this, but I'll give you some of the highlights of the, what we've been reviewing with our compact committee. As you know, one of the things that we're going to be doing is computer-based testing. So we've been reviewing that. Actually, our teachers are preparing this year for implementation of computer-based testing next year by really aligning their curriculum and the work they do with the Chromebooks on that. We also, at that, at that compact, we reviewed the state test scores. Kids will be taking the tests in the next few weeks. So we'll see how that, how that works out. Seems like everything's going well. One of the things, our big curriculum initiatives, is our science rollout of the inquiries or the labs. Actually, Michelle put together with BOSIs, we had a wonderful trainer that came in during our past superintendent's conference day, and I had an opportunity to sit and do every inquiry. The teachers all did it, so they're well-trained. Our science curriculum is well-aligned because we've implemented the science kids through BOSIs. Really, in the past, I would say about five years, we've implemented it as they have created them. So the teachers feel very well-prepared for that. I think we have a good plan moving forward on that. The other thing that we have been doing is selecting assemblies. Those are actually coming back. It's actually something that kind of died during the pandemic. That group of, it just, you don't have a lot of performers. So we are going to be having Kevin McCarthy return back to our school. And that'll happen coming April twenty-fifth. And we'll also, this Wednesday, we'll be returning to Aladdin at the Rochester Theater on this Wednesday. So we'll actually get that back in play. So they helped out with that as well. The other thing that Michelle has been heading up here is the outdoor classroom. And you had our wonderful kids present there. We are actually going to be coordinating that with the compact committee and our PTO for a build day probably at the end of, the end of September of next year. The plan at this point is to do some of the excavation with the town during the summer when they're actually finishing up some of the site work on Churba Street. Then they'll do the site work there. And we just purchased the items for that, the logs and things like that. So we'll have like a community build day. So that should be taking place in September. So we'll coordinate that with compact and we'll coordinate it with our PTO to see if we can get parents out to help with that. It'll be a fun time. We did the same thing with our plan. So those are kind of the updates, the things coming up. Really, we reviewed our code of conduct. I'll have Dr. Chanel speak to that because the change is really primarily high school changes, as is typical. And the, so we'll finish the code of conduct. And also, we will be reviewing the alveous bullying prevention court, the questionnaire that the students took. We just got to do some work with our teachers to develop those strategies. But our plan is to review those with the teachers and then develop the plan and then present that to our compact. So any questions and any updates from? Thank you.
The middle and high school compact committee, our goal for this year has really centered on communications. And so we have spent a vast amount of our time really looking at, I guess, taking it from the frame of, if you're brand new to our school, how do you know? How do you know what we do? How do you know where to find the things? So we've done some deep dives into the way in which we communicate as a school, how parents can access the communication. And sort of the overarching feedback is really that we communicate maybe in too many ways or that parents just don't have an opportunity to say, I want to be communicated with this way. So I am excited to share that as a district, we are actually looking at some new communication tools. So our administrative team and the technology department, we've been able to dive into two tools and kind of take a look at them from the perspective of the feedback that's coming out of the middle, high school compact committee around as a parent being able to log into like one place and to be able to see in that one place the multiple communications that are coming from the school. There are definitely tools out there that we have just been introduced to that will, I think, meet that goal better than anything we could design on our own. So I'm excited about, about that for us as a group. Our last compact committee, we shifted gears and we began to talk about the code of conduct. In terms of the code of conduct, there is only one change that the board will see when the code comes to you in draft. And it's really along the lines of helping families craft a language a little bit to help families understand what progressive discipline really means. So we understand that maybe when a child gets in trouble, maybe the first time they ever get in trouble, it feels like a very harsh consequence. So maybe they get out of school suspended, and it's the first time they've ever been in trouble. And parents don't always understand that because maybe we haven't described progressive discipline well enough. So there are certain acts, there are certain things that a child could do in the walls of a school that out-of-school suspension would be really the answer to that particular behavior. We wouldn't start with detention for particular behaviors, if that makes sense. So the goal in our, in our last two meetings, one, the first one, really talking about the, the issues that we see, the, the data in terms of the discipline that we're seeing in the building and that where that code language might be a little bit challenging to parents. So you will see in a draft, an attempt by the compact committee to come up with a, a couple of sentences that just helps parents understand that there are certain behaviors that would actually cause us to move very quickly to a much more harsh consequence. So you'll see that when it comes to you in draft. Other than that, the code of conduct is pretty much intact. We did a lot of language revisions last year around cellphone and video surveillance, as you would call it. In other words, kids recording you video or audio without your permission, doing that to one another or doing that to our, to our faculty and staff. So those revisions happened last year. We really haven't seen a lot of issues with that same cellphone use this year. We also discussed as a compact committee, the issues that we do still know exist in our school, even though you might not see it in our discipline data for kids that are vaping. We are very well aware that vaping is still an issue with teenagers, period. So over, at, at the recommendation of the compact committee, you're going to see myself and Mr. Ricardo are going to launch a marketing campaign here very shortly outside of the bathrooms here at our school, where we're going to give kids an opportunity to engage with some posters that will take them out to some statistics and some data around a lot of the things that research is now showing us is happening. So if you remember back in the day, like the This Is Your Brain, This Is Your Brain on Drugs commercial, that was actually the example that the compact committee gave, that maybe we should try to use some things that have a little bit more shock value to them. So you will see some teach pieces that I will say, I think, fit us culturally. So it won't be anything so stunning that, that kids would be, you know, unnerved by it or that we would be ashamed to have it show up anywhere other than outside our bathrooms. But it will be teaching them about the lung damage that's happening. And honestly, we found a lot of research that's really starting to talk about the brain damage that is happening because of vaping. So there are particular components inside the vape that are actually causing cognitive delay, almost like brain fog, when these things are smoked. So making sure that our kids know that. We were able to make contact with University of Rochester. U of R's been doing a lot of research around vaping and its impact on adolescents. And we have been connected with an education division, a doctor that's actually researching that, that is willing to partner with us as a school to make sure that we keep a campaign and messaging for our kids and our families. So all three of those things are really things that the compact committee is just kind of moving with their feedback. So any questions? Thank you.
Okay, moving on, we have no old business, so new business. Item one, approval of transportation requests to out-of-district, non-pupil schools for two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four. Resolved that the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approved the transportation requests to out-of-district, non-public schools for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school year. Motion, please.
Moved.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? How many of them were there, Bob?
Four. One, two, two.
Two, to two different schools. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Mr. Malasani, presentation of the proposed two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four school budget.
Yes, so tonight, we will, we're at the point where we'll be adopting the budget to find your approval, which will be the next resolution. Just going to speak to a lot of things you've already seen. However, if our community has not been abreast and kept abreast with the budget theater, you can go to our website and get all the information. So with that in mind, if this were to work.
We need a student.
So tonight, May, April eleventh, again, we'll be adopting the board. Just a reminder to, just shared this with the communications, our next board meeting is not Tuesday, April twenty-fifth. It's actually Monday, the twenty-fourth, I believe. So it coincides with the BOSIs, we have to also vote on the BOSIs propositions as well.
That can't be voted on until that Monday night, is that correct?
It has to be voted on that same day in order to count all the schools in the Genesee Valley BOSIs vote on that day. That's correct.
Will the meeting just consist of one motion?
No, we'll have a couple of motions, and we'll also be beginning to discuss board goals for the twenty-three, twenty-five school years.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. So again, as I shared earlier, here's all the information regarding our presentations. They'll all be made available for the public. So our general support is went up eight, eight percent. And the main reasons for that is basically salaries. Nothing more than salaries. If we have a little more fees for, for legal affairs, as you can imagine, it's very legit. It's cited right now. So that'll, that's the increase there. Instructional is, although it's a modest increase of five point one six, we have some savings with some of the retirees. That's why you don't see a substantial increase there. Transportation expenses is up roughly forty thousand dollars, thirty-five thousand dollars. And that's based for salaries and benefits for school bus drivers. Insurance services is up roughly four hundred dollars, and that's for our continuing that program. So benefits, the increase here is basically healthcare and retirement systems and a modest increase of three point two nine percent. I think that's the lowest increase since I've been superintendent in the last thirteen years. Healthcare is roughly seven percent, Jeremy?
Combined, it was right around five or six.
Five or six percent, which is much lower. It's been double digits for the last ten years or so. Debt services, this is what we have for capital debt, debt payments for buses and so forth. So our total expenditures, the budget we're presenting you is twenty million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand dollars. It's a four point seven three percent. And you can see your increases over in the right-hand column from the previous school year. So revenues, how are we going to pay for this? So the very first one, property taxes and other taxes. So the other taxes here are dealing with.
Sales tax, filings, and any penalties and interest taxes.
Yep, state aid, where we see a large increase, and it's basically due to foundation aid. Calley Mumford received a little over six hundred thousand hours in additional aid. Again, one of our highest aids in the last twelve years. Federal aid is twenty thousand dollars, that's for Medicaid reimbursements. Local revenues are.
BOSI surplus refund and admissions, the fuel, because we provide fuel to the municipalities, so we have that revenue in there, and interest earnings.
So other than that, it's the same amount of reserves we're going to balance the budget with, fund balance. And you're looking at getting a twenty million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand dollar revenue source budget. So in order to get that amount, we did use the board's excess criteria. We had to make a couple of cuts of a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars, which is on the next slide. So proposing, we're going to eliminate a teacher assistant position through retirement. She's retiring at the end of the year, we'll be eliminating that position. We do have a couple employees that we hired that do not require healthcare expenses. So roughly thirty thousand dollars savings there. We had a vacant bus driver position all year, were able to manage. We will be eliminating that position of twenty-two thousand dollars and then reduce our technology purchases of thirty thousand dollars, which closes the gap of a hundred thirty-seven thousand dollars. Proposition transportation, again, the goal is to purchase a small bus and potentially a, a van type of school bus or one large bus. So it's all based on what the availability, if we get to that point. But either way, we will not exceed two hundred thousand dollars. And again, there'll be handicap accessible buses. Vehicle and equipment reserve proposition, we'll be closing the existing vehicle and equipment reserve, closing that, moving three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars into the new one. It'll be limited at one million dollars. And we utilize that probably to, to create a purchasing plan for some of our electric school buses that will take place here, you know, from twenty twenty-seven to twenty, twenty, twenty thirty, twenty twenty-two. Twenty thirty-two, thank you. Thank you. Outlay project, now we're looking at purchasing for HVAC units in the elementary office. If there were ability, we'll also replace one in the nurse's office as well. So tax caps at one point nine three. This budget will call, call for a one point nine percent tax levy increase. And you see the ten-year data here, roughly seventy-five percent of our, our voters have voted yes on our school budgets because it's been very prudent budgets. Budget, budget to budget differences over the last ten years is a little over two percent. So how does this impact our taxpayers at one point nine percent? If you have a hundred thousand dollar home and you have a star exemption of roughly thirty thousand dollars, which is the most common one, it's fifteen dollars or a dollar twenty-five per month. And if your home's worth a hundred and fifty with the star exemptions, you see it twenty-six dollars, roughly two dollars and seventeen cents. That'll be the impact to our taxpayers. What happens if the community says no? This budget doesn't meet their needs for whatever reasons. The board may submit another budget for consideration. All right, it could be the same budget if you so desire, or it could be a revised budget. The second budget, if that were to be defeated, you have to adopt the contingency budget, which means you have to go out with zero percent tax cap. So that would be a substantial difference from where we were last year. Do you have numbers?
For the tax difference, about a hundred and forty-four thousand.
Oh, yeah, for tax levy, that's correct, because there are more money we see this state aid, that's correct, thank you. No exclusions are permitted under contingency budgets. So basically, some of the equipment purchases could not be purchased.
Yeah, no increase.
Any questions?
Robert, please, quickly, briefly. The, we got six hundred thousand dollars more than last year this year from the state, correct?
About six hundred sixteen thousand for foundation aid only.
That being said, how far into this process did we know that we had six hundred thousand dollars more?
Well, right now, that was the budget, the executive budget proposal. So officially, it was the fourth, third or fourth Tuesday of January.
Okay.
But the same, you still got to adopt the budget. If you go back to our budget guidelines, we say we'll design a budget with the release of the budget, the executive budget proposal, which again, is the third or fourth Tuesday of January.
That, that's what I thought, but, so we've added to our advantage basically right from the start. But, but had we not gotten that, and we got the same amount as last year, that would have been?
You'd be looking at substantial cuts.
We'd be sitting here with a six hundred thousand dollar problem, is that correct?
At, at least six hundred thousand dollars, yes.
Okay, I, for some reason, I thought we got it.
So what was, which was unique about this year, which we never experienced, in November, they released aid runs. All right, but nothing's ever official, we're all estimating. So we kind of knew in November, if in fact we got what they proposed, is the district were going to be pretty good shape. They had cut a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollars or so from our budget in terms of what we feel is necessary to provide a highly, highly competent and program for its kids. So we kind of knew that in November, and then once we got the budget released in January, we felt good about it because rarely does it ever happen where you receive less than the executive budget. In the past, they've always added to it. Last two or three years, they have not added to the budget, to the, to the foundation aid. But we were pretty confident going into that we're in the best scenario in quite a few years as we're designing our budget. So I'm not sure if the state will do that again next year. And if they do, then, you know, if we get another six hundred thousand dollars, you know, district's in really good shape. But if we return back to that hundred and twenty, hundred and forty thousand dollars, you're going to be looking at some harder decisions here in the near future.
Would it be safe to say that the new governor may have had something to do with the early announcement compared to previous Democratic governors?
I would say that necessarily because of her, but I know as, as a legislative branch, they determined a couple of years ago that they were going to close out the GBA, in essence. They were, everybody that was underfunded, they were going to make whole. So even like your wealthy schools, your Brightens, your Missords, they're, they're getting well over millions of dollars increases. So the state made it known, if you were underfunded, they were making you whole over the last two years. So this current year and next year. So school districts can almost predict what they were going to receive from the state.
I, I hate to be negative, but just one last question. So this year and next year, we're going to be whole, is that correct?
So next year, we will, we are whole.
Okay.
We're really only underfunded fifty-nine, sixty thousand dollars from the previous year.
But the year after that, is it's not going to go back down six hundred thousand dollars when they say we've already paid you back?
Well, I, I like to say no, it won't go down, but we all experienced it if you were in school districts in two thousand eleven.
Correct.
When they applied, they had the money to fund schools, so they applied to get a donation adjustment.
Very good.
And they just, they gave it to you, then you took it away, so.
Thank you for your patience, all of you.
The reduced technology purchases, do you know off the top of your head kind of what you're looking at with that?
Right now, we're looking at licenses. So in other words, all the apps that we provide students, all the technology purchases, that's primarily what we're looking at to reduce that amount. And again, you're still using the words criteria, you know, where it impacts the fewest students. And if, if we were to eliminate one of those apps, we're going to also try to replace it with something that already exists in our schools, something similar to accommodate students and teachers.
So that's almost more of a good budget tightening measure anyways.
Yeah, I mean, one of the goals is to make sure that the district was edlogged to comply, edwalled to comply, to make sure that we didn't have any of our student data that's available to third parties that were selling our student data. So everything that we did is compliant, it's up on our website, people can see. Anything, everything that we use is up there. And they signed a contract with us, they're not going to sell our, our data once we, I guess, close out the account with them. They have thirty days to actually remove all the data. So they don't keep it in their, in their database at all, it's on the cloud, so it can't be found. So, and that's not the Calmont thing, that's New York State thing. Every, all school districts have to use that now.
Any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Now to adopt the proposed budget. Resolved to adopt the proposed budget of expenditures for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four in the amount of twenty million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand, three hundred thirty-five dollars. And for the purposes shown in the statement of estimated expenditures adopted by the Board of Education, be one and the same, is approved. And the amount thereof shall be raised by levy of a tax upon the taxable property of the school district. Motion, please.
So moved.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any more questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. That motion carried. Three-part budget summary report.
I have Jeremy present this. So we are required to put our budget into three parts, administrative, program, instructional, and capital. So administrative is simply that, it's your administrative costs. So anything to deal with administration, so secretaries, administrative assistants, health insurance for those individuals, materials and supplies, contractual services for those individuals. So legal fees will fall under that. Then your instructional is your meat and potatoes. So we try to have our instructional be over seventy percent. Last year, we were at seventy-two point three four percent. This year, we dropped a little bit, we're at seventy-two point oh five. Reason for the drop is not because we're adding to the other areas as much, it's because of certain increases in utilities and fuel. So our capital component actually shot up from sixteen point three to sixteen point six five, just over two hundred thousand dollar increase, which is a little higher compared to normal. But that's because our utilities are just shooting up and our fuel costs are shooting up. I think combined, we were almost ninety thousand dollar increase in those two areas alone. So that is why instructional took a little bit of a hit, but we're still well over seventy percent at the seventy-two point oh five. And then your capital component, that's all your buildings and grounds employees, health insurance related to them, your debt service, any interfund transfers. So you might say, hey, debt service is a little low at a hundred and eighty-five thousand. Our major debt service expense is an interfund transfer. So we transfer money from the general fund to the debt service fund to pay for our major debt. That was at one point five million number. And the difference between the one point three and the one point five is your debt service number, which is your buses. So all in all, this adds up to a hundred percent, it adds up to ninety-nine point nine nine. The reason is, is just rounding issues. We're going to correct that on our budget newsletter. Instruction should be seventy-two point oh six, but it adds up to the twenty million, three hundred sixty-eight thousand. And it'll be posted on our website for the community to see. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Executive session resolved that the Board of Education adjourned to executive session at six thirty PM to discuss the employment and employee history of particular persons and confidential student records protected by FERPA. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
We're back from executive session. We're back from executive session. Next item is personnel. We have one item under personnel, leave of absence. Resolved at the Board of Education, upon the recommendation of the superintendent, approve the leave of absence request for employee number five twenty-three on or about June seventh, two thousand twenty-three through on or about the end of the two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school year. Motion, please.
I can make it.
And a second?
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. That motion is carried. Resolved at the Board of Education, adjourn the meeting of April eleventh, two thousand twenty-three at eight oh four PM. Motion, please.
I'll make it.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, say nay. Everybody have a good night.